All right, I would like to call this meeting of the Tullahoma Regional Planning Commission to order. And as I check the numbers, we have five, and therefore, we do have a quorum. And if I can, I will call on Pastor Jim Norman of the Highland Baptist Church to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. All rise.
Let's go to the Lord's Prayer. Heavenly Father, as we come before you in all humility acknowledging we are not a perfect people, nor are we a perfect nation, and so we seek your forgiveness that you may hear our prayers and heal our land. We thank you, Lord, for the many abundant blessings that you've given to us for life itself and the health we need to fulfill our callings, for your strength that sustains us, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in a useful work as this, and for the honor of bearing the appropriate responsibilities. We thank you for the freedom to call upon you and for loving us with your grace and your mercy. In your word, you've told us that you've given us governing authorities to promote peace and order and justice, and so we pray for this Planning Commission meeting, Lord, and we ask that you would give each one of these leaders wisdom to govern the various interests and issues of our times and of this city. We pray, Lord, that you'd give them a sense of welfare and the true needs of this community. We pray, Lord, for a hope for justice and righteousness, for confidence in what is good and pleasing, the ability to work together in harmony, and a personal peace in their lives and a joy in the task that they have set before them today in this agenda. Father, we pray that you'll give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live in and around in this city of Tullahoma. We ask you to bless this city, for you to bless this state, and that you would bless this great nation that we call home. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, if we could have the commissioners take a look from pages three through, oh, I'm looking at here, ten, eleven, about three through thirteen. These will be the minutes of May 20th, June 4th, and June 18th meetings that were held.
Do we have to approve each one individually?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Which one?
The first one.
Okay, so we have a motion. Okay, yeah, we have to go individual.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the May 21st meeting minutes as written in the document from pages three to six. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Those minutes are approved. On to the June 4th minutes.
I have to approve June 4th minutes. Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the June 4th minutes, which ran from page seven through nine. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The June 4th minutes are approved. Now we go to June 18th regular session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the June 18th minutes as printed in the document from pages 10 through 14. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Those minutes are approved. That being taken care of, we come to the reports of officers and staff.
Staff, no reports.
Okay. Then we move on to old business, which is the review and action on section ZTA 215, revision of text amendment for nonconforming provisions. This is to bring into line our nonconforming with the state's requirements.
That one's already passed, but there was a part of, there was section 804 that I revised to make it less wordy and to accomplish the same goals. And if you look at the text, what's, section eight, 804 has been, has a strike through it. That's what was the old language, and then the one that's in bold and italic is the new or the revised section, 804.
Page nineteen.
Page nineteen through twenty-one?
Yeah.
twenty-one as written. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Hearing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approval say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Is this a recommendation that goes to the BOA?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are voting to recommend approval. And it carries. So now we go to final plats. The final plats that we are going to look at, which are two, are public hearings. So to explain before we start, in a public hearing, the public is invited to give statements. At the opening of the public hearing, you will be allowed two minutes if you wish to make a statement. If you have, you will be required to, when you come to the podium, state your name and your address slowly for the recorder so that we can get it correctly in the minutes. And if you are a second person coming and wish to defer your minutes to the first person, then you must state your name and your address and tell us you're deferring your minutes to the first person who was speaking. Hopefully, that's as clear as the mud that I just put it out with. Please excuse that. So first, we will hear any public hearing comments on the Bruce Estates Manor subdivision final plat at 985 J.D. Neal Road that begins on page 22 and carries through page 27, I believe. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this issue?
Good afternoon, I'm Don Bruce. I'm the owner of this property. I live in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 1911 Haynes Drive. And if anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Thank you very much. You can be seated, unless you have more to say. Is there anyone else who makes, wishes to make a comment? Seeing no one else wishing to make a comment on this subject, I will close this public hearing, and we will proceed to entertain motions on this subdivision.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the request for a subdivision as printed on pages 22 through 27.
I see a typo here in saying that Mr. Bruce's address is in Tullahoma instead of Murfreesboro.
I just got it.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So, given that correction to the document itself, do we have, I have a motion in second. Do I have any discussion from the panel? Hearing no discussion, I'll move to the question. All those in favor of approval say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The approval has been issued. The next one is another public hearing. This will be on Midley Way Minor Subdivision Final Plat, which is on documents from pages 28 through 32, no, 33. Okay? So I will open the public hearing for anyone who wishes to speak on this subject.
Again, I'm Don Bruce from Murfreesboro, Tennessee. This is my property, and if y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have to close the public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Sorry, I was looking at a map here for a minute, because I had a question, but I thought, no, I'll wait till the panel to do that. All right, I will close this public hearing and entertain a motion now.
No good approval.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve this request for a subdivision as documented on pages 28 through 33. And any discussion from the panel? And I would like to ask one question. Sir, you're, the lot, as I look at this, the lot one and the lot two, you're allowing a right-of-way. Is that right-of-way, that lot one is also your property, correct?
Yes, and now, I don't know how this came about, but I talked to my surveyor today. We had it drawn up as having a flag lot with a 50-foot strip going back to the back lots, back lot, and for some reason, it was changed, I guess, by the planning director or somebody. And so we was, didn't quite understand why it was better to have a lot with an easement across it to the back lot than to have a lot in the front with a 50-foot flag lot going in behind it. But we'll take them however we can get them. And so, effectively, we had rather had it with one lot in the front and a 50-foot strip going back to the back second lot. And but we want to do and be pleasing to what was requested for our surveyor to do.
If I'm not incorrect, that's because your lot, lots are supposed to have an access to a public street or a named public street.
What he's discussing is that they were going to do a flag lot, and the pole was going to go to the road, and instead, it needed a 50-foot ingress egress easement per the ordinance, per the subdivision regulations anyway. She just states that, you know, even in her land use plan, it states that discouraged panhandle lots are flag lots.
Right.
So that's the policy. I was following the policy.
We're following the policy here.
But they have, you know, they'll have just as much right to cross through there and put it in the driveway and maintain it, just as if it was a panhandle lot.
Okay. And the recommendation from the staff is?
To foreprove.
Okay.
Get favorable recommendations.
That answers my question. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any discussion? Then I'll move to the question. All those in favor of approving the subdivision as documented on pages 28 through 33 say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. That carries. So now, we have a zoning map amendment. This is also a public hearing with the same requirements. This is ZMA 223, a request to rezone property at 725 Old Shelbyville Highway from R1 to And I will open the public hearing for comments or statements.
My name is Jerome Headley, JMH Architecture. My clients are Russell Kredel and Tina Rose, and I'm in Tullahoma. Do I need my, you need my exact address?
I have it. I have it on record.
We have it on record, and it's okay.
Okay. If anybody has a question, I'll be happy to answer it, but it's pretty self-explanatory what they're wanting to do. And the other part with Mr. Lawson, we did get a letter of no review from State Fire Marshal's Office that's been forwarded on to the building departments. They have that, along with the other appropriate documents from the, from the Fire Marshal's Office.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else here to wish to make a comment on this from the public? Seeing no one that wants to make it, we'll close these public hearings, and we will proceed to the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on procedure. This is really a two-step process with the item that's in the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do we, if we pass this, do we pass it on the condition that it also be passed by the Board of Zoning Appeals?
With this particular function, we're just giving it a recommendation. I mean, we're not really, I mean, we're given, so not really given approval for the rezoning. It's probably going to be best to do that on a conditional use permit, say, we'll approve the conditional use permit.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I don't think if that were to be disapproved, I don't think you'd want to go forward with the zoning.
If the zoning, if they still have the right to, if they, you know, we just don't approve the conditional use permit, but then recommended the zoning be changed, then they could always, you know, pull their permit or pull their application.
Well, I think it'd be cleaner if we just put a condition in here that that be approved for this to go forward as a recommendation to the board. If it didn't get approved, then this would just die.
How does that affect the owners?
What do you mean? I mean, they, we're just recommending the rezoning.
We're recommending a rezoning to Agro-Cultural from residential special.
The use permit is actually what's.
And my point is, this is moot if you don't approve that other.
So if we approve the conditional, if we approve that, then we're actually approving the zoning as well, correct?
We're giving a favorable recommendation.
Okay, favorable recommendation, okay. So that's what.
So it's just, I'm just saying we're approving contingent on the approval of that conditional use.
That can be, that certainly can be a part of the motion.
Well, I make a motion that.
Well, hang on one second. I have, oh, wait a minute, we don't even have a motion yet. I can't ask anything. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the request for rezoning contingent on the approval by the zoning, the Board of Zoning Appeals.
The approval of the conditional use permit.
Yeah, the conditional use for the same property.
Headley, is that what we need to do to be able to get this approved, to be able to send to the board?
Yeah, that'll be filed.
Okay, I second that.
Okay, I have a motion in second to approve the request for zoning change on zoning map amendment 223, covered in pages 34 through 40, contingent upon the approval of the.
Conditional use.
Conditional use permit from the Board of Zoning and Appeals. And is there any discussion on this before we go to a vote? And I would open the discussion because I have a question. This document states that this is, this currently has a single-family dwelling and the event stable on it. Am I correct? Is that what it's saying?
On the property, originally, there was a barn that was built back in the mid-'70s, I believe, 77 thereabouts, and that had been there. Then, I guess several years ago, they, there was a residence built there, which is at closer to Old Shelbyville Highway. The owners, Mr. Kredel and Ms. Rose, they have had various people come to them asking to be able to have, say, like a wedding reception or a wedding hour on the property, because if you see where the barn is, there is a large field that is in front. The residence there is off to, as you're driving in, would be off to the right. So they've been approached to be able to do this. The portion of the barn that they're wanting to use for catering purposes only is that it's the west end of the building, so that a car, when a, if an event is held, the car comes in, excuse me, comes in, sets up, they'll have a, like a buffet table, and they will have tables there for the food as things go by to set up. And when it's time to eat, the people that are at this event come in, get their food, then they head back to the tent. There are, on the site plan, I have shown two different locations, because sometimes they'll set up a tent back in the wooded area rather than up in the open field area. So the tenants bring their food, or, excuse me, the people that are attending this, they bring their food back to the tent, they have their food, the event is all handled, is all conducted in the tented areas. And with the field as large as it is, people park there. There is a portion on the west end that an additional piece of concrete was poured that they used, that if there's somebody that is needing ADA assistance, they can pull up there, and then they can be taken to whichever location. This, these events can happen several times during a year. It's not a permanent operation. They have just had, because where the property is, various people come to them and asking them about being able to do this. Once the event is over with, by, I believe they say, they tried, they keep it to about 10 o'clock, then the people leave, cleanup is done, and then the barn goes back to what it's been, a barn, part of the barn. Mr. Kredel has some old signage from earlier days of Tullahoma, among other things, and he has that in-in-one portion. He's got a workshop. Otherwise, what existing stalls are, that's just existing stalls, that he's got various things in them. But when the event happens, they use the west end of the building, otherwise, it's just a barn.
Well, I'm just, I'm asking, because I'm just trying to clarify, according to the picture that's.
The law cabin when built, when that picture was taken.
Oh, okay.
There's a little law cabin on the closer to the creek in the front.
Okay, because that house is not in the property lines.
Right, right.
So I'm like, wait a minute, now it says there's a house, and I don't see a house. So this is an old picture.
It's a current residence.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I, that's what I was trying to clarify. Where's the house at? Okay, good enough.
Well, on the site plan, we, in there, there is a site plan, and we had the site plan updated to show where that residence was on there.
Well, the site plan's in the conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, all right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
So that answers my question.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question that is related to the difference between R1 and Agriculture. Is this conditional use not available on R1? It is available on?
Yeah, it is available for Agriculture, but not for R1.
Okay. Okay, so with the motion as we stated, to approve the subdivision contingent upon approval of the conditional use permit from the Board of Zoning and Appeals, those in favor of sending a favorable recommendation, now, will this go to the county, or will this go to the?
This is to the city.
The board of mayor.
This is part of the city?
So the recommendation would say forward to the VMA with a favorable recommendation contingent upon the conditional use permit being approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
All right. Given that.
Well, don't we need a motion?
It's already been made in second, hasn't it?
You made the motion.
I did.
Renee.
Yeah, you made the motion, Bill.
It's been a long time ago now.
Yeah, you slept since then.
Made a motion on the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you did.
Sorry.
Okay, so those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right. So then, now we are at the text amendment, ZTA 216, creating a neighborhood commercial district C3, which would be a new zoning designation, correct?
Yeah, it would be a new district.
Basically, it's a new zoning designation within the ones that we described, right?
Yeah, the ones in the zoning one that's.
Yeah. In Article 4 of the zoning ordinance, that is contained on pages 41, 42, and 43. So we will open this public hearing for anyone who wishes to say anything about this from the public. Is there anyone who wishes to make statements about this? Hearing no one, we will close the public hearing then and entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
I have a motion in a second to approve the text amendment as printed on pages 41 through 43 in our document. Is there any discussion amongst the panel?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Lee. Lee, do you see this primarily as being used to rezone existing areas or to zone some new areas? How about?
I think both. It just, it was in our former, the district was in our former zoning ordinance. It was in our former, the district was in our former zoning ordinance, and for some reason, it didn't get carried over to the new one. And there were a lot of areas that, since it wasn't carried over to the new one, they're, like, nonconforming now in certain areas, especially, like, you get over to the Atlantic Street area where this type of zone would fit really well.
Yeah, I would think there's several areas in town.
Yeah.
This might clear up some nonconformities, but I just wanted to know if that was part of the purpose.
Yeah, allow people to rezone some properties, try to identify some, and go ahead and bring it, bring it back, and then have the Secretary of Board of Mayor and Alderman represent it.
I'm excited about this. I think this is overdue, so thank you for putting it together.
Yeah, I'm also excited because I think it clarifies a lot of what can and can't be in certain areas, and that is helpful, too. Okay? Any other discussion? With no further discussion, those in favor of recommending a favorable recommendation or sending a favorable recommendation for the amendment to the zoning ordinance, Article 4, ZTA number 216, as printed, to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. And with that, we have one other thing to come before us right now, and that is a, this will be an information-sharing presentation from Ms. Marjorie Collier on updates to our city's National Register of Properties.
Do you need my name and address?
No.
I've recently nominated some more sites in Tullahoma.
To the microphone.
And I've been a member of the Historic Preservation Society since its founding, and I've been on the City Planning Commission and Historic Zoning Commission, and I still felt like I had learned some things, and I thought maybe some of you are new or anyway, would help clarify what's on the National Register in Tullahoma and what it means. I've got some sheets, but I've only got two copies. You want to share one inside? The first defines it, it's a nation's listing of cultural sites worthy of preservation. And the history, by 1966, the National Historic Preservation Act called upon the Secretary of the Interior to maintain a National Register of Historic Places and to encourage state governments to participate. And although it's under the Secretary of the Interior, it's maintained by the National Park Service, which is under the Secretary of the Interior, and designed to be an authoritative guide to identify the nation's historic resources of significance and indicate what properties are worthy of preservation consideration. And I'm really summarizing the criteria. They do a lot more lengthy explanation, but it boils down to four categories, really. The history of the site, if a person of outstanding is connected or associated with the site, if the architecture is outstanding, and archaeology is another division that would qualify a site. In Tullahoma, in 1983, the Historic Preservation Society conducted a citywide survey of all buildings in the area which were over 50 years old. I was involved in that, and although we were trained in two seminars by the Tennessee Historical Commission, that's the state linked to the national... I really didn't realize it was leading to the National Register in a sense. It really was. And they provided some funding. And we established historic zones, Historic Preservation Society did, and we worked with the Historic Conservation Commission, and you should have a copy in there, do you? I know that most of you have been on the Planning Commission, I mean, the Historic Zoning Commission, I know what they are. We had a hearing with the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and also, we had separate hearings in each of these six, seven districts, and most people were very supportive of it. The Board of Mayor and Alderman approved them. We had one or two objections from some downtown people. There's always a fear, if you have any restrictions, that it's going to affect you negatively. There are no restrictions on these historic districts. In many towns, they have historic districts which have legal clout. Ours does not. It's just planning. I personally wish it did have legal clout because we could, if people wanted to change an outstanding historic house, they would have to come to the Zoning Commission for advice. And I presume, do you know more about this than Mr. Lawson, that it would be, they would be required to maintain its history?
Yeah, they would have to maintain the building, its architectural, you know, its period.
Yeah, integrity, yeah.
And then they have to get a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Zoning Commission to do any type of work on the exterior of the building. That's usually how, you know, there's regulations to be enforced.
I included three sheets describing each of the seven districts. I don't know if you've had time to look at it. If you have questions, you can ask them now or later. The nominations to the National Register, the next sheet, you find that one, maybe made by individuals, historic societies, local governments, property owners, and just about anybody. The procedure that I did was obtain the application form from the Tennessee Historical Commission. I started working on this about 2002 or '03 and put it off. I guess I thought I'd live forever, but I finally got going on it last year. And they now like to do a lot of it by email. So, the form is on your computer. If you want to nominate a property, you can get that form and fill it out and send it to the Tennessee Historical Commission. It requires information about the site, the history of it, address, architecture, why you think it's important, and you have to back it up with legal documents, which you Tennessee Historical Commission visits the site and completes the nomination and passes it to the State Review Board, which meets three times a year. The State Review Board makes the determination if it should go to the National Register. And then it goes to the National Park Service, which makes the final decision whether it should be on the National Register. What we have in 1988, we did our site survey in '83. I'm not sure I mentioned that. 1988, we had a professional help on this, and Mark Schip was the leader. Nine buildings were placed on the National Register, and they are on northeast Atlantic Street. You've probably driven down there and seen the older buildings in town. And I wrote in there that street address. You've probably seen that. I thought later you might want to know. But it starts with the Smith-Hall House, that lawyer's house with the mansion roof, and goes down that side to Hogan Street where the Toma House is. And that's called the Depot District. You can see where that is on your district map. In 1993, we made some more nominations. This was still under Mr. Schip's direction. And his house was placed on it. It's the Schip House on the corner of North Washington and Moore Street. And they placed some workers' cottages. The description of the nomination said they were people who worked on the railroad, lived... I don't have any record of that, but somebody came up with that idea, and so they're on there. I think they need to take another look at it because some of them have been torn down or replaced. If you go to North Washington and it's south side at Brown Street, before Brown Street, you'll see those houses, and you can see some of them, you know, should be taken off. They do take off buildings that are removed. Okay, these are the latest nominations I made. You got that sheet, 2007? I decided I didn't need professional help. I knew I'd worked on old houses until, ever since I've been here, and looked up the deeds and studied the architecture, so went ahead. And this is the sheet, 2007, National Register nominations. First was St. Barnabas Church, 1897, Catholic Revival. The architects are prominent architects, and I think that's significant to the building. Mr. Hunt was from Chattanooga. You can look a lot of this information up on the Internet and see it ahead. He was very well-known, particularly for designing churches. About this by date, the next one is Wilson Crouch House on South Jackson Street. It's a good example of a bungalow in the 19-teens to 1930. It was a very popular style in Tullahoma. I don't know. I guess it fit the economic situation at that time, but you see a lot of them. We don't know the architect on that. But it's an outstanding bungalow. It's the best that I've seen in Tullahoma. Then, I nominated the Tennessee Correction Academy. The buildings were built from 1918 to 1976. Does everybody know where that is on South Jackson? I think Ms. Dunn has seen it in person. Colonial Revival. You can call the superintendent's office and ask to be shown the buildings there. They like Friday afternoons because they have a graduation ceremony. They're teaching correction officers of the state, and that's when they have their ceremony. But he's been very helpful about showing the buildings if you'd like to see it. Several were designed by Henry Hibbs, prominent Nashville architect. The state owned the property, and they were selecting the architects. So, they got some really well-known, well-trained architects. And he designed the first several and laid out the campus-like area. If you've seen it, it's an oval. It looks like a campus. The buildings are arranged around the oval. And there were some other well-known architects. Let's see, one of them was Henry Hunt. It was Reuben Hunt who designed St. Barnabas. I thought that was interesting, the link there. The next one was 1934, it was built, Smother and Stevenson House on Blackwell, also Colonial Revival. George Waller was a prominent Nashville architect, and it's a great example of Colonial Revival, and so are most of the buildings on the Correction Academy. And the last nomination was on the building we're in, for an excellent example of a style that didn't last very long in this country, but it is a very well-known style. And it was designed by Mario Bianculli of Chattanooga. Reuben Hunt was Chattanooga, too. I shouldn't have said that. But he was well-known, particularly for designing modernism, although he designed one of the buildings at the Correction Academy, which is the Colonial Revival, so he's quite talented. So, the last page gives the results. Out of the five nominations, only three made it. I would say Barnabas didn't make it because they thought that the new parish house conflicted with the setting. And, of course, I beg to differ, but, so maybe some other time we'll get it on there. The other one that didn't make it was the Tennessee Correction Academy, and the state is not sure what they want to do about the Correction Academy. They might want to move that somewhere else, and this would be a big loss to Tullahoma, so we don't want that to happen. And not only from the standpoint of the great architecture of the buildings, but has a large economic value to have all these people come into this town. So, that's the listing of what's on the National Register in these pages. And I think it's something that the Planning Commission really needs to be aware of and help protect. Any questions on it?
Thank you for all your hard work. It's not an easy task at all.
We appreciate all your work, Ms. Marjorie.
Well, it's something I really enjoy. Let me give this a second now. I'll be here for a second.
With nothing further to come before the Tullahoma Regional Planning Commission this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So am I.
I have a motion and second to adjourn the Tullahoma Planning Commission meeting. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. We are adjourned from that, and we will move to the Board of Zoning and Appeals. Do you have a handout for that?
I don't.
Do you even... Okay, we got an agenda.
Second page.
Page 44.
Page 44?
Yeah, she's got her 44.
Well, it ends at 43.
It wasn't at 44. It wasn't at 44. I got mine.
I don't have one. I've been looking for what page is it on there.
I don't have a page 44.
If we can get copies made downstairs.
You can probably pull it up if you got your email.
I just got the agenda. Who's got one?
I've got the downstairs. I got the agenda, page 44.
Maybe this one starts off with the four. I put two of them in there.
Oh.
Pretty much they got all the down in my...
I thought that they were just kind of running together.
We will once again call the Board of Zoning and Appeals to order, and we first must review the minutes from May 21st and June 18th, May 21st being on page 45, June 18th being pages 46 and 47.
Motion to approve, May 21st. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the May 21st meeting minutes. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Those minutes are approved. Now for June 18th. I have a motion and second to approve the June minutes as printed on pages 46 and 47. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Minutes are approved. Next thing is the, a conditional use permit, CUP 204, request to operate an event center in a stable at 725 Old Shelbyville Highway. That is listed on pages 48 through the end, I'm assuming. Which doesn't have the number on it, next page. Which doesn't have the number. Which doesn't have the number.
57.
57.
Oh, there it is on the bottom, 57, okay. Lee, can you make the page?
Where somebody gets the number.
The picture's so big, the numbers are going to be small, okay. I think we got a pretty good overview of this when the gentleman was speaking to the other questions that were being said, so...
I've got a suggestion relative to this. First of all, I think it's a...
We don't have a motion yet.
Well, but I don't want to make a motion until I say this, otherwise it has to be revised.
All right.
But the... I think this is a really good project for Tallahassee, and I think it's something that's needed. I've been to events out there, and I thought it came off very, very good. And apparently, there's not any neighbors here to express any objection to it. And I think we should do it. However, I think that we need to take a look at the conditions that's been proposed. And I'm thinking that we need to add a few to that. And if you look back at what we did in these June 18 minutes, I think there's some of that that should be contained in there. But one in addition I'm proposing to put into it is one that says that the operation is limited to that as described in their narrative. And there's a narrative attached that... I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. I've forgotten your name, but what the gentleman said earlier, he kind of went through that narrative. But if we had a statement in there that it's limited to the functions that are described in that narrative, for example, that they're going to have only eight to 10 events a year, they're not going to expand the business. I think they said they had a $10,000 limit or something in the narrative that's published here, and those kind of things. I'm just saying that we're limited to that narrative. The other thing is if you look back at these June 18 minutes, there was a motion made on that one which would say limited use as well. And those said, first of all, it must meet all fire and safety codes, must meet all other conditions required by the Development Advisory Committee, must obtain a building permit. I don't think there's a building permit required here because I don't think there's going to be any building. Must have a certificate of occupancy in place. I don't know whether that's required or not, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. And must have a business license on file with the city. That's probably required too. So what I'm suggesting is that we put these amendments, these conditions that were included on that one, except for the one requiring a building permit, and add one saying it would be in accordance with the operation described in the submitted narrative. To me, it just wraps it up and makes it a complete document. I think we did a pretty good job on this one, June 18.
Lee, what are the restrictions, or is there anything changing this to agriculture?
I'm looking at this...
Well, this is not changing agriculture now. This is aligning the conditional use once it's changed agriculture.
Okay.
The other motion took care of changing it to agriculture. Now what we're doing is granting a conditional use permit. So these things just don't apply to the zoning. They just apply to the conditional use permit.
And why do we want to adhere more restrictions?
Well, these things are required.
Well, the things that are required, yes, but why? I think you're wanting to add a few more things to it. Why do we want to add more to it?
Well, the only one that... The only one I added to it was just saying that it'd be in accordance with the operation that they've described. You see, we ask them to describe an operation that they're going to do. And now, if you don't put that in there, then you're saying, okay, you can use anything you want to.
May I address the board? How this originated, as I said, my clients have been approached several times about having an event. And what they're... All they're doing is basically using a small portion on the West End of the building to be able for caterers to come in and set up and have a buffet. They have been doing everything to put everything into place. They went... I represented them at the Development Board, ran this by the Development Board. One question was brought up about the use because that little portion that's going to be used for catering is considered an assembly area, which requires either a letter of non-review or drawings and appropriate documents submitted to the State Fire Marshal's Office for their review and approval. What we did after getting... And Mr. Lawson was here, I met. I have talked with Mr. Steiner. Mr. Steiner and I, we... And I can't think of the building inspector's name, but we've talked through this. I submitted documentation to the Fire Marshal's Office to get... For a letter of non-review, considering that this is done, they may have these events a half a dozen times a year. And that little portion of the building is just used for people to be able to go in, get their food, take it back, and go to the tent area where the event's being held. But because of the situation that is being considered an assembly, we had to go through this. We submitted the appropriate documents. We received a letter of non-review, which went to the Building Department. So they had that on file, along with the appropriate documents that were part of that submission to the Fire Marshal's Office. And again, all they're doing, they're trying to put every... They've been going through the steps to get everything put together so that once they have approval for this, then they'll get the appropriate license required so that when they do have one of these events there, everything is already... They have all the appropriate licenses, which... And I'm not... And I don't know all the ins and outs about the various licenses, but have all that. But we've done everything to get to this point. And that's what it amounts to, is once the conditional use is granted and it's approved, then they go... They do the next step of applying for the appropriate business license, obtain that, and then they'll be able to have these events at various times during the year.
Well, I understand that. And I think you've done a good job of laying all that out. And all I'm saying is... And the documentation is here. All I'm saying is to tie the conditional use to that work that's been done that describes what you want the conditional use for.
I disagree. I feel like this is very much in accordance to the spirit of agrotourism. And I feel like if we make them only have eight to 12 events a year, and then everybody and his brother gets married one spring, then, sorry, you've already used your 10 uses.
Or the class reunions that are going to be out there. Or the other...
Well, that's in there.
I think that's stifling. Yeah, just... But I think you're... I agree.
Well, maybe you don't want to limit it to that. But all I'm saying is limit it to what they say they're going to do. And you could not limit them to that.
Well, but then, okay. Being on the Tourism Council, there's so many things that come to Tallahassee that we might ask them to do that would not be a wedding or a reception, or it might be the flying.
Okay, don't put that in there. But to me, to just give somebody an open-ended conditional use permit, and you don't define what that conventional... What the exceptional use is, then you don't have a document that has any legal meaning. You've just said, okay, I'm saying you got... You're approved for conditional use, but I haven't defined what that use is.
But the conditional use already has stipulations in it, correct? It already has...
Well, if it's approved with the conditions that were listed, then it would have the conditions.
We're just saying we don't want to add more to it. The way that it's listed is fine, because they've agreed to that, but we don't want to add additions to it.
Well, you were the one who made the motion last time to put those things in there.
Just as it is.
No.
Just as it is right now.
No. You made a motion on June 18th to the one that we were considering at that time to put those conditions in there. So you thought it was a good idea, then.
The hands and feet ministry, is that what you're talking about? That was a different... That was a different chief.
Well, yeah. But those conditions define what they needed to do. And some of those same things are required here.
Those were safety requirements.
What?
Yeah, those were state-mandated safety requirements.
Aren't they required here?
A safety requirement would be.
Yeah, and the building permit.
Yes, absolutely.
Because they're not going to build, but the...
If they did, yes.
Business license?
Yes.
And all those things are required, just like they were then.
Yes.
In the process that I've been going through, the Fire Department's already been out there to see... To make sure that they had access from Shelbyville Highway back there. So we... The Fire Chief, to the best of my knowledge, has no problem with it. There is a fire hydrant right by the entrance into the property. They would be able to address running a line from the fire hydrant back there as needed if they had to respond to a fire. So we've done due diligence in making sure that everything is in place with the Fire Department, Building Department, as to the appropriate...
But that's what this statement right here says. Must meet all other conditions required by the Development Advisory Committee. That thing that you're talking about is the Development Advisory Committee in there.
Yeah, he's already been through it.
Yeah. So they made some suggestions here. And all this says is, is that they comply with what they ask them to do. And he says that, so everything's fine.
Right. But he's already... I understand, you know, the one with the... From last month or June was... They didn't have a design professional with them. They were just here... They were just laden here, wanted to do this. Mr. Hidley's a design professional. So they've already got a... They're a little bit ahead of the game here with this one. And what they were, theirs was a little bit more in concept kind of thing. They didn't have their design professional. And he's already sent things to the state. He's already done work as far as the site plan or the floor plan as far as addressing safety issues. So, I mean, they're a little bit more well-organized than that last group, so, yeah, that's the reason why I didn't feel the need to put all that in there because, I mean, he's a design professional. He probably already knows about all this stuff, even what they're going to have to do. It's... It was just that one was to inform folks that we're not used to doing that type of thing.
I agree. And I've stated that all the work has been done. All I'm doing is saying, let's approve it in accordance with that work that's been done. That's all I'm doing. Rather than just leave the thing wide open and say, hey...
Maybe a clarification here might help. I don't know. I want to... Just let me ask you. In this area where it states, "Notes from Development Board Meeting of Wednesday 7/18/2018", these were all issue... The titles are all issues that were brought before you, and the wording underneath them are the answers and responses to those issues. Am I correct?
Yes.
So when we look at this, the issue was brought forth. They have answered all the I don't know what the judgment of the Developmental Board was after that, but evidently it was favorable. Otherwise, we wouldn't be looking at it tonight, would we, Lee?
No. I mean, we're just doing the site, the site and the conditional use permit. I mean, they've already... We're going to end up going there and issuing a building permit for the occupancy, so you have to...
You're going to have to issue an occupancy permit.
Yeah, you have to... You issue a building permit, then you give them an occupancy permit, then they got their certificate of occupancy to do that particular type of operation in that section of the stable.
So these questions have been answered, so I see no reason to... Unless this board did not accept these answers, I see no reason to impose this on them. I mean, it's already been imposed by the board, has it not, by the Development Board?
Some of it's... The stuff is... I get, you know, I don't believe anybody had an actual issue with it at all as far as what they were doing. So back... If I look back at the record, you know, as far as them taking it to the... Of course, my department is them getting a conditional use permit. Other than that, was the state was going to need to look at it. But they've got an overview letter from the state. So, yeah, they pretty much accomplished, you know, all the stuff that the Planning Commission or the Development Committee was requiring or was asking for.
May I address that real quickly? See, during that meeting, the one... Because of what's going to be conducted in that one small area, that falls into what the building code considers an assembly area. And in an assembly area, you have one of two ways of addressing it as far as building permits. One is receiving a letter of non-review, which is basically issued by the Fire Marshal's Office stating that they do not require any drawings and documentation to go through their office for review and approval. If the assembly area exceeds, and this... And you have several... There are several different occupancies that fall within the assembly. And because this... There's food service. A restaurant does fall within that. If you have an occupancy load of 300 people or more, then the Fire Marshal's Office is involved in the process, and you have to go present the appropriate drawings, submit them for review and approval. But because of what my clients are doing, and they have... In talking with them, you... They will have an event that may have, say, could be 100 people, could be maybe 200 people. But it's for only one day. But because of that portion of the building being used for service, food service, we have to go through this process. And that's what we did to ensure that the state is satisfied with it. And then, in the meeting, when I was talking with Lee and the appropriate people, that was a question that was raised. And I said that we will obtain that letter so that, from the Building Department's point of view, everything is legal from their standpoint. And that's what we've done to satisfy everything that they have asked of us.
So the only thing that we would really... If we were going to impose anything, it would simply be what would be on page 53. And most of this is simply stating what their intent is. And to try and lock them down to only doing what they say their intent is would be to limit their possibilities for growth, as I see it. Because if we say, well, your intent is to only have six or eight events, then... And we lock it down to that, then that's going to be a problem. Because, as you say, what if you come up with a ninth event, and now all of a sudden they can't have it? That's not good for business. That's not good for Tallahassee.
As I understand it, when they have the events, say like with weddings, sometimes they may... Whoever's being married, they may end up setting the tent up a couple days. they may -- whoever's being married, they may end up setting the tent up a couple days earlier because they're going to be going through some, you know, preparation for the event. But normally, once the event is over with, the tent is in a, say, a day or two, the tent's gone. The appropriate areas, all that has been cleaned up, and it's just a barn. As I -- and Mr. Kredl, if I hope I'm not mispronouncing his name, but he does both he and Ms. Rose. Well, Ms. Rose has T. Michelle's, so she's there at her business. Mr. Kredl, he is -- works with Nissan, but his job situation allows him to be able to work from home, so to speak. And he uses what would be considered the office area of the barn where he'll be conducting his employment business there unless he has to be elsewhere on company business. So that's, you know, that's basically how it is. And once they have the event, you know, as I say, the site's cleaned up and it goes bad. So they may be approached at some time, even the city may approach them about using the property to have something there. But this just came up, that several people had talked to them about it, and they just wanted to do everything appropriately so that everything is in place, so that when they can do it, they can.
And I'm assuming that they will -- they're going to have to get an occupancy permit?
Yeah, they'll need to get one from my department.
And they'll have to --
Since the state said they were, you know, it didn't fall under their -- the top occupancy they would inspect, and we would just, you know, they'd go in there, and our commercial building inspector would go in there and just look at whatever, and give them the certificate of occupancy or things. You know, he's already drew out a plan for it anyway, so it shouldn't be very --
Shouldn't be any problem with that.
It shouldn't be.
And they're obviously going to have a business license to operate this business. So they'll have to have that for business purposes.
Yeah, it's a safe environment there.
So the conditions are already set forth as far as the conditional use. And it's basically just the things that we just mentioned. You've got a site plan, you've got to have your business license. Those licenses are already set forth that they have to get, and they already know about all those.
Yeah. It looks like all the conditions have been met.
We just don't want to stifle them by saying they can only have eight or 10 events or 10 or 12, and they can only make so much money. So I just don't want to put any more conditions on them than what they already know that's in here.
Yeah.
They're fine with this, I'm sure. Or they wouldn't have --
I was going to ask what they were.
Yeah.
If there were conditions, like as far as the business operation being confined to just that lot?
That's it, yes.
No permanent signs, which I don't think they're going to do.
No.
Just anyway. And then events, and I'm not talking about them doing the -- we're talking about just the -- the barn setting up or anything like that. Just, you know, between like 11 and 9 p.m., you know.
But what they -- as I understand it, they -- and I believe that was in the description that was sent to you. If they have a wedding reception or a wedding, you know, it may start at -- the event -- the proper part of the event may start at, say, 5:00. People will be getting there maybe an hour early. And then, by around 10 o'clock, that the event's over and everybody is leaving property. So it's just for a day. But, you know, in some of the -- in talking with them, it could be that depending on what's going on, they may have the tents set up earlier, a couple days earlier, and --
What I'm looking more at is the noise. You know, I had some adjacent property owners ask about that.
That was the --
And that's the reason why I said they're going. You know, maybe 9 o'clock would be a good time to --
And I really don't -- and I -- Lee, and I'm going to disagree with that only in that so many functions we have as a city, as the chamber, as so many things, it does go on to almost 10:00. So I would say 10:00 versus 9:00, just because trying, you know.
Well, if that's what you're going for, that's not a big point.
You know, I just -- just because I know so many events that we do, unfortunate, we'd all like to get home. But they don't. I mean, you know, our chamber, there's so many things like that that I think you almost need to say 10:00. I know it doesn't sound -- an hour doesn't sound like a lot, but it's still a normal thing.
These functions are taking place in a commercial setting. This is taking place in a residential setting. That's the purpose of it.
Yeah. I think I know most of the neighbors who live around there, though, and they attend those functions.
But they try to -- they try to hand it so that whatever's going on, by 10 o'clock, people are already heading back home, so to speak. And they're -- and both Ms. Rose and Mr. Kredl are there during the time that this event's happening so that if something's starting to get, say, out of hand, so to speak, they're there to address it anyway. And one -- and during that, when I met with Mr. Lawson and the other gentleman, that there was concern about noise. And it happened, apparently it happened during one thing that happened out there, and there was a band that was playing a little bit longer and a little bit louder. But they're aware of it, and they will be taking the appropriate measures not to have that occur again.
And if I look at this picture, unless they've deforested a whole lot, there's a lot of tree bumper between a lot of this and the other --
There's a lot of trees.
Places around.
I've been out there. There's a lot of trees.
So do we have -- we've had quite a bit of discussion. Do we have a motion on this request for a conditional use permit?
Can I make the motion?
To approve the conditional?
To approve the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Yeah, 11 to 9:00. 11 to 10:00, I'm sorry.
It's, as stated, it says 11 to 9:00.
Okay.
It would need to be amended.
Okay, I need that to be amended to 10 o'clock then.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I was going to say, am I allowed?
Yeah, I'll second.
I have a motion and second to approve the conditional use permit request, number 204, as shown with the amended hours to be 11 to 10:00. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The approval is given. I want to thank the board for your work today, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Awesome. There you go.
I have a motion and second to adjourn the Board of Zoning and Appeals meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are adjourned.